Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Happy Veterans Day to everybody. If you are a veteran in the audience this evening, I thank you and the council thanks you for your service to this country and also to our community. So I will call to order the workshop for November 11th, 2024. We have a few workshops tonight, or two, and I will turn it over to Ms. Rush for the roll call.
Mayor Simpson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon?
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Ferrey?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
All right. How very fitting that on Councilmember Ferrey's final night with us, we have a housing workshop. It's her favorite topic.
On Veterans Day.
I know, on Veterans, for one of our veterans. So perfect. So I will go ahead and call up Ms. Carrie Espinoza, our Housing Manager, to open the workshop for Arvada Human Services Grant Program Recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor. So we are here this evening to present the 2025 Human Services Fund Recommendations. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an overview of the Human Services Grant Fund and share the recommendations for award with the council before we bring the recommendations to you for approval at a future business meeting. I do have some help with me here tonight. Nick Ashmore, the Housing Grants Administrator, is here with me. Laura Andes is here. She's the Chair of the Human Services Advisory Committee, and we also have a couple of additional committee members here as well. So thank you to all of you for being here tonight. Before we jump into the recommendations, we wanted to give you a brief overview of the Human Services Fund and its purpose. The Human Services Funding Pool is open to local nonprofits offering a variety of programs determined to provide human services to various populations in need in the city of Arvada. These services may be direct services, information and referrals, or the coordination of other services that assist low- to moderate-income households. Funding for the Human Services Pool comes from $110,000 from the General Fund, $75,000 from Hodag, and $75,000 from CDBG. The Arvada City Council approved the creation of the Arvada Human Services Advisory Committee. The purpose of this committee is to participate in the evaluation of grant applications, provide funding recommendations to the council for area nonprofits that serve low- to moderate-income Arvada residents, and those who offer services that are in alignment with the city council strategies. They serve to provide recommendations for the grant application and review processes. There are nine members of the committee, and the committee typically meets twice per The next slide is a timeline that the Human Services Committee follows for the applications. So in May, we hold our first meeting, and that is the meeting where we welcome our new members, we share updates, and we've come up with a plan for the upcoming application period. In July, the housing team contacts a variety of nonprofits to notify them of the upcoming application period. In August, we open up the 30-day application period for nonprofits to submit their applications. In September, the applications are shared with the committee to score, and we hold our second meeting of the year, and that's for the committee to review and determine which organizations should be funded and how much. And then in November, we present our recommendations to council. The application process itself involves the nonprofits applying directly into the city's Foundant software platform. This is a new program that we're using to replace the Google form that we have been using in the past. Committee members review the applications and complete the scoring matrix, and on the scoring matrix, we use the following criteria. We look at a nonprofit's experience, identified need, budget reasonableness, benefit to Arvada, how they leverage other funds, duplication, collaboration, measurable outcomes, sustainability, and alignment with city council priorities. We wanted to share with you some trends that we have seen over the past five years with the applications. This slide here shows the number of applicants and the number of the applications that were awarded. So you can see here that in 2020 and 2021, the number of applications stayed consistent at 21, and 16 of those applications were awarded. We did see a decline in requests in 2021 and 2022, dropped to 17, 18 requests, and out of those, we did fund the majority of the applications that came in. And then in 2024, we did see an increase in the number of applications. It did jump up to 23, and there was a decline in the number of awards. And the reason for the decline is the committee had discussed, they wanted to make sure that the grant was making an impact. In the past, we might have issued an award for $2,000, $3,000, and we wanted to, instead of issuing those smaller amounts, we wanted to make sure that the funds that we were giving were going to make an impact. So we wanted to make, jump up that minimum amount of award to 5,000. So that's why you'll notice a decrease in the number of overall awards. This next slide shares the amount requested versus awarded, and this is the total amount requested from all applicants. So you'll see in 2020 through 2022 that the amounts requested stayed pretty consistent between $350,000 up to $372,000. In 2023, we did see a decrease in the amount that was requested. It did drop down to $304,000. And then in 2024, we saw an increase, a pretty big increase. It jumped up to $544,000 in requests. Our budget has stayed the same over the years at $260,000, and so that's the bar that you'll see in black there. This next slide talks about the average low and high awards, so what we have seen over the years. So 2020 through 2022, the average low and high awards stayed pretty consistent, with the average award being between $15,000 to $16,000 to $50,000. The low award was at $5,000, and then the high award was at $30,000 for each of those years. In 2023, there was an increase in the average award up to $17,000. The low was decreased to $2,000, and the high award was at $40,000. And then in 2024, there was an increase in the average grant at $20,000, an increase in the low at $12,000, and the high stayed consistent at $40,000 as the year before. So let's talk about the 2025 applications. So again, the total city budget is $260,000. We received 28 applications, which is up by five from 2024. The total amount requested is over $800,000, so we did see a big increase in the amount requested from the nonprofit organizations. The Human Services Advisory Committee, they really faced a tough challenge, and trying to trim that list, to go from over $800,000 in requests down to $260,000 was not an easy conversation to have. So the methods that were used to trim the list is they looked at the priority areas identified in the Arvada Strategic Plan. They looked at the impact. What kind of impact would this grant have? Duplication of services and also the quality of application. You should have received a hard copy of the spreadsheet that we reviewed. If you want to pull that now, I'm going to turn it over to Laura, and she's going to walk you a bit through it.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to be here on behalf of the committee to share with you our recommendations. I first really want to thank the council for supporting this program and for Carrie and Nick for all their hard work in wrangling us together to be an effective committee. As Carrie said, we had a very daunting task with over $800,000 requested, more applications than we've ever seen as far as when I've been on the committee, and several new organizations that we wanted to make sure we reviewed carefully. Where we ended up was we really prioritized improving housing, supporting vulnerable populations in Arvada, making sure we were supporting organizations that would benefit the most Arvadans, as well as food security, health, and mental health. And so you can see the first 20, we funded 20 out of 28, and you can see the amounts recommended there. I'm not going to walk through that. You can do that on your own. In almost every case, we were unable to meet the requested amount by the nonprofits. Many requested far more. But we did try to balance across, making sure those organizations that were in line had the best applications, proven to be most effective, impactful, and history of a good track record within the city. So I'll stop there and see if you have any specific questions about the recommendations.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon?
Thank you, and thank you again for your service in doing this for us. I really appreciate it, and to the committee. My, I guess my big, kind of high-view question about the scoring and your selection process is I noticed that, at least in the score column, there were three projects not selected that had higher scores than what I could find, two projects that were selected. Could you talk a little bit more about that process and how that occurred and the thinking behind that?
Yeah, I think you're referring to Jeffco Center for Mental Health and Special Olympics. In those cases, Jeffco Center for Mental Health actually has two applications, and so we funded the stronger one. This one was really around dropping in COVID dollars and trying to replace that, and so we wanted, we didn't think that that was as worthy as some of the other organizations on the list. Special Olympics Colorado, while always a very, you know, strong organization, we felt like had other resources that they could draw on beyond the city of Arvada.
Thank you, and I think the other, the other one I saw was the Dignity Project, DBA, Showers for All.
Sorry. There were many this year. Let me check my notes. Oh, they did seem like there was potentially, the shower services would be provided at the new community table, and so we thought that might be a duplicated program.
Okay. Great. Thank you for the explanation. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Well, I always appreciate what you all do, and there's never enough money. I have comments about this at the end, but my question right now that just stood out for me, and again, we don't try to weigh in too much on your selection, but what stood out for me was a contribution suggested to, or to the Food Bank of the Rockies. They didn't get any award last year. I don't remember if they've ever really applied, and we funded that at 100%, but yet our own food bank that services our own citizens, almost 100%, we only gave them 20% of their ask. So I'd like to understand why we would do a regional food bank versus the one that we use here within the city.
Yeah, that's a great question. So the Community Table is another organization that typically applies under two different applications. So we did fund their assistance program, which is more around financial assistance. Given the huge amount of support that the city of Arvada is giving to them with the new building and the new resources, we thought this year, we, given all the other great organizations, that we could fund them at a lower level, the Food Bank of the Rockies gave a very strong application and sort of showed that they were going to provide different services in the food table, or community table, and so we thought it was worth providing them with funding this year.
Well, the food bank does fresh produce, and that's what it's described as. I have a hard time because I've never, you know, being on that board, I've never seen the Food Bank of the Rockies ever do anything for our city. In fact, they would charge double the price for the food bank to purchase from them, the Community Table. So I just, I just pause on that one because that's 100% of the ask, where you did percentages on everyone else. I just, I struggle with that one, and this is probably the, one of the first and few times I've ever weighed on one. That just seemed odd to me. So I'll leave it there. You don't have to justify it too much more, but I was hoping there was something more that elevated that, but I don't, I don't think I'm hearing that right now, so we might flag that one for later in conversation. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Ferrey?
Thank you. I know a lot of work goes into that, and it's really hard to make decisions because there's a lot of needs out there, so I can only imagine how heated those discussions or passionate those discussions were. One of the things that we talked about in terms of variables was impact for people in Arvada, and what I see is the Audio Information Network of Colorado that ranked at 79%, and then Benefits in Action ranking at 79% that was not funded. The thing that stands out to me is that it's $27,500 for that, and I'm just curious how many people they intend to impact with that large donation amount versus Benefits in Action. I would imagine Benefits in Action would have a higher amount of people impacted at that level of funding.
Yeah, both organizations were, you know, are serving very unique populations, we thought. Audio Information Network of Colorado, this is always one that gets a lot of conversation within the committee. It does serve a very niche community that doesn't, there's no other duplication, so we thought it was worth it to give them $5,000 this year. Benefits in Action, they are a new organization. They don't have the same track record. They had low scores, and we did think that there were several other programs within the city of Arvada that provide similar services.
Sorry, I missed that. I thought it was $27,500 you're giving to them. That was, that's one line below, so sorry about that. Okay, $5,000. All right, that's, that makes more sense. The other thing is that Hope House Colorado had received $1 million from the, I think it's Gates Foundation or Bezos?
It was, it was Bezos's ex-wife.
Mackenzie Scott, yeah. And so I wonder how that had played a role, if there was a discussion, that's a big chunk of money, a million dollars going to them, if that played a role in any of the conversations in terms of funding. I just see that they're getting some funding on there, and that was a big amount that they got this year.
I remember that one, sorry.
The Hope House was, the extra funding from that was taken into consideration, along with multiple other fund, organizations that are receiving larger funds from other funding sources. That was taken into consideration. I guess they did, the committee evaluated based on the work and the impact that it would have, and they, and we have a long partnership of funding with them, so the committee decided to move forward with that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the Mackenzie Scott donation was for capital construction of the new daycare and childcare facility at Hope House. It was not for operational expense, correct?
I believe you're, I believe you're correct, Mayor, but I can't say for certain.
Okay.
So. I think what also factored into Hope Houses, they are providing a service to young mothers that we didn't see with the other applications, so that did jump out to us, that it's not a duplicated service.
I see no additional lights, so, all right.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, Mayor Pro Tim Mormon?
Sorry, I have a technical question. What is Hodag?
Hodag is a loan repayment that the city received. It stands for Housing Opportunities Development Action Grant, and so the Housing Authority had made a loan to an affordable housing project many, many years ago, and that loan was repaid to us, and the amount was just over $5 million. And so we've been using that, that fund to support a variety of activities here at the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer?
So let's go back to scoring. And some of these folks, did you go back and look at their history with us and their reports, and did you do any site survey or survey or site visits and?
We did not do any site visits unless it was as an individual, but not as a committee. When they were available, they did have in the application often to write a section on past results.
Okay.
And their, their, you know, overall monitoring and evaluation plans.
And I think some of these, we have contributed prior years to '24, just like the Audio Information Network. I know we've, I think we've for decades gave them money until recently. The only one I still struggle with is the fact that, to me, if we're trying to avoid duplication, I feel that the Food Bank of the Rockies is duplicating what our, our own food bank is doing. You know, I hate to weigh in on it, but I just struggle that, I'd like to know what $10,000 they're going to do for my community, and here we're going to give them $10,000. How will I know it's coming back to the Arvadans? I mean, what did they say in their application? Or do we know?
I think our, our committee will take that under advisement and maybe have a conversation after to make sure your input is.
Yeah, if we can just revisit that. I mean, we're not taking any votes right now, obviously, but I think we need to revisit that a little bit more. This is so important, it's valuable dollars. We don't get very many of these dollars, and it took kind of a huge effort just to increase it when Councilmember Miller was here. And so every dollar really counts, and I appreciate that you spread the peanut butter a little bit more than last year. And, you know, one question I would have further is, was the bigger chunks more effective than the smaller chunks? You know, I'm kind of curious, did we see that impact? And why this is important, and let me stress this for you, we have a lot of discussion around homeless right now.
Right.
One strategy could be, well, why not put more money into this effort? Instead of $185,000, why not move that to half a million? Right? So if that discussion even furthered with council in our future study sessions or anything else as a strategy, I'd really want to make sure that every dollar is going straight to an Arvada. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And, because we're going to try to avoid these folks from going from, on the verge of it being unhoused. Could this prevent that? You know?
I think the committee would actually really appreciate it in that May meeting, if there was a study session that we could participate in to understand your priorities. That would really help us make sure we're as aligned as possible.
So in March, March we have our strategy. You should come and attend with us.
Great.
And then our study session on the homeless is on December 7th, so you should probably listen in on that. But we're digressing a little bit, but it's impactful for me to understand because if there's questionable people in here that are not, every dollar is going to it, to an Arvada, and that's, that's where I get worried about. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Yeah, I just want to, I know we're probably not supposed to get in agency by agency, but I, I do think the Food Bank of the Rockies needs another look and those funds put somewhere else.
All right. Any other questions, concerns, comments from council? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you all for your hard work at this. I know it's not always easy, and we appreciate your diligence and commitment to it.
Thank you again for supporting the program.
Thank you very much. All right. I will now, I will close the Human Services Grant Program Recommendations Workshop and now open our Pavement Management Workshop with presenter Ben Sawaya.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. My name's Ben Sawaya. I'm the pavement manager here at the city of Arvada, and I'm going to talk to you about the pavement management program. Start out with some general information. The, the purpose of this program is to maintain the city of Arvada's street network, which consists of over 1,500 lane miles of paved roads, and we aim to utilize our budget to maximize results across the entire street network. We aim to promote accessibility and examine equitable, inclusive, and sustainable service to everyone in our community. Of course, we deliver the core service of street maintenance and rehabilitation, but there's a lot of other areas, other things that this program helps to move forward, such as accessibility. This year, we've replaced 389 curb ramps to make them ADA compliant. We replaced a lot of concrete, curb gutters, sidewalk, crosspans to support our paving projects and also to promote accessibility. And every time we resurface a street, of course, we have to re-stripe it and improve the pavement markings, and some of those things have changed. For example, all our old crosswalks are one by six. We're updating all those to two by eight stripes, and we're able to implement some of our bike lane master plan and along with our, as part of our paving projects, we work with our traffic team to get the, you know, the new striping plan where we have, where they plan to update and add bike lanes, and we're able to implement that along with our paving projects. Our program goals, so here we have our three main performance measures. I think most of you have heard about PQI or Pavement Quality Index. That's our primary way of determining our, our overall pavement quality. And these other two are very closely related. We have remaining service life, which is the estimated number of years it would take a street to go from where it's at down to 20 PQI or less. Anything under 20, we consider to be in the failed category. And then percent deficiency, we've set a minimum acceptable pavement quality for our streets, and anything that falls below that, we consider it deficient. And we've, we've set different kind of parameters for each of the different functional classifications, of which there are, there are three, and we'll talk about this a little more later, but we have arterials, collectors, and locals in all of our streets fall into one of those, one of those categories. And so the point I'm making here is just that these things all work together, and if, really, if we achieve one, we achieve all. Now, the, the life of a street, the point I want to make here is just that pavement management is cyclical. It never really ends. You start with a new street or a newly rehabilitated street. We do preventive maintenance. We apply surface treatments to preserve that street in good condition and extend the life as long as possible, but ultimately, there's going to come a time when we need to resurface that street again, the milling overlay or reconstruction. So with that in mind, we've set some annual measures to achieve and sustain our, our program goals, and these are the things that we'd like to do year in, year out indefinitely in our ideal sustainable program. So we like to resurface our streets every 20 years. We'd like to do 5% of the network each year, and that equates to about 75 lane miles. For surface treatments, we'd like to touch 10 to 20% of the network. Currently, we're, we're around 10%, and that range will vary depending on the current status of the network. As, as pavement quality improves overall, we have more good streets that we want to keep good, so we have more streets that are eligible for those surface treatments.
Quickly, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. So just a comment that you made, want to keep good streets good. So what I've been hearing a lot about is my street hasn't been touched in 20 years, and it might be more of a collector even, not just a local. And I, I think that there is a thought in some areas that we're just being underserved. And so I'm just, I know that there is a formula, and I know that on the city's website, there is a schedule, but given the state of some of the, of the neighborhoods, they really take, take pride in their yards and their homes, but their streets are a mess. They're so alligatored, and the question I always get is, when is the city going to get to my street?
I get that question a lot, too.
And I, even in my neighborhood, where, where the houses were built in the 50s, but I really do get this, and I don't want to step on Councilmember Ambrose's toast, but I get that a lot in District 2, in the southeast area of Arvada. So. So I'm just hoping that, that there is a way to pay some homage to those people and, and, and take a look at their streets critically and maybe somehow, I don't know, get, get to them sooner because it is, it affects their, their housing prices. It affects their quality of life, kids in the streets. And, and if you've ever tried to play street hockey out there, it's pertinently impossible. So I, I just, I know we want to keep the good lanes good, but let's give the bad lanes some love. Thank you.
And I think I was at concrete replacement. So we do the concrete replacement to support our resurfacing projects and to improve accessibility, but that would be comparable to that 5% of the network. We typically do that one to three years ahead of resurfacing, so those two kind of go hand in hand. So what, what would that cost? Here, we're comparing this year's pavement management program and funding to this ideal, sustainable pavement management program that I'm describing. This year, we, we resurfaced 2% of the network, about 30 lane miles. We spent $8 million on that. So to do 5% of the network or 75 lane miles would cost approximately $20 million. We, we touched 9% of the network with surface treatments, 135 lane miles, and that costs $2 million. So we're, we're a lot closer in that category. To do that 10 to 20% is 2.2 to 4.4 million dollars. And then if we increased concrete replacement along with resurfacing, we land at that 8.8 million. So we only need about another $20 million a year to, uh, to do what we really want to do. Some things to take into consideration when we look at those numbers. Excuse me. That's based on our current costs, like current reconstruction needs and concrete needs. Uh, if we, if we could start doing this now, we'd find ourselves in a much better place. 20 years from now, we'd have been through the entire network once, and we'd have a lot less patching and reconstruction. Our, our resurfacing costs would be reduced, and our concrete costs would be reduced. All of our curb ramps would be compliant already. We'd only be replacing damaged, you know, curb gutter, sidewalk, crosspans, ramps, those things. And our concrete typically lasts longer than asphalt, so if we kept up with this pace, we'd spend a lot less on concrete. And the, the curb ramps alone, I think, counted for 60 to 70% of our concrete replacement this year, so that would make a big difference. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the surface treatments would actually increase as pavement quality improves. We'd have more streets that are eligible for that cost-effective preventive maintenance. Now, this is a, I think this is pretty cool. Our, our IT folks helped to set up this dashboard to help illustrate this idea and kind of why we set our goals where we have. So bottom left, we have this deterioration curve, and I'm just going to click through these slides, and each one is a different point on that line. Top left is our pavement quality, and then you've got remaining service life. And that far right dial is going to show you the cost of resurfacing. So here we have a brand-new street, 100 P Q I, 25-year remaining service life. And as we move down that scale, you see the dials kind of shift over. And here, we're, we're showing the base cost for mill and overlay, like just our base cost to resurface without any patching or reconstruction. And you're going to see that cost stay the same as we go down this curve. And just a note here, this is where we'd like our network average to be, right at 70 P Q I with our remaining service life just a little over 10. And we'll keep going here down to 40. This is, this is the ideal time to resurface, right before we get into that red zone. Or we're still at that base cost for a mill and overlay. And that, this, this cost includes everything, mobilization, traffic control. But, but we're not yet seeing the additional cost for patching and reconstruction. You can see as we get into the red, here, we're up to $4 a square foot with some full-depth patching. There's some partial reconstruction, more reconstruction, and finally, full reconstruction. And you can see how much the, the cost goes up. So the idea here is that we want all of our streets to live in that 100 to 40 range with the average right in the middle. But we really want to be resurfacing before we see this, these additional costs. So here's where we're currently at. This is current status, and this, there's kind of a lot going on in this table. But we have our, our three main performance measures, pavement quality, percent deficiency, and remaining service life. And then we've broken it down by functional classification. So you see the arterials, collectors, and locals. And this is where we've set all the goals. So for arterials, we have a lower tolerance for poor pavement. So we, we've set the parameters between 150. We want all of our, all of our arterials to be in that range. Collectors between 140, and locals between 130. And you can see currently 60% of our locals are below 30 P Q I. 40% of our collectors are below 40, and 30% of our arterials are below 50.
Quickly, Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Or to the other slide. Did, did you by any chance, maybe I'm getting ahead of it, but do you show if there's any treatments, how you prolong the life of that asset?
That, that wasn't included in this, uh, this visual aid.
Because I think it's important to know if we're to invest, and you're saying keep good roads good.
Yeah.
There should be some illustration of what, what surface treatments can be applied to prolong another five to 10, 15 years to the road. So you, you, if you're hitting that 70 P Q I and you, you do a crack seal, or not a crack seal, but let's just say, uh, well, crack seal is probably an easy one to do, right? And just what does, because that trajectory changes, right? It might add five more years to the pavement.
Right.
And, and I think, I think you have to almost put little buckets, right? You have, okay, we got good roads, good, that's a bucket. Then we got these, these local roads that are at 30 P Q I. We're just going to have to deal with those. And as, as we deal with them one by one, they move into that other bucket, right? And you keep that, and you sustain those surface treatments. It would be interesting to see how you can tell that story and how you can graphically show it. Tell the IT guys to figure out how to make that all work in here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that for sure, I think.
But I think that's important to know, the, the different treatments, because it's not always a repave or reconstruction. Those are some of the most costly asset management you can do on, on the pavement.
And we've made preventive maintenance our top priority. I mean, we're doing everything that we can, every, everything that makes sense to do, like all the crack seal that we can find where we think it would be beneficial, we're doing it every year. And of course, the different function classes, we manage a little bit differently. We don't have as many options for like full surface treatments on arterials with heavier traffic, like, you know.
But your chip seals have been successful. You've been very successful in chip seal as well. And, and, you know, that's, that's put some life on it. So I just think it would be interesting, if we're trying to figure out the money and trying to get you to that extra $20 million, how do we, how do we help you get there based on, so it's not just a bleeding bucket of problems with the roads, right? There's, there's, I think there's two areas.
And I tried to capture that in that like 10 to 20% of the network range that we're shooting for, for surface treatments. And we'd definitely be doing more and more of those when, when the streets are in better shape.
But don't forget about the ones that you just did, you know, 10 years ago. That's my fear is, and not that you got to undo it, but, you know, we as council need to understand that you still got the five, 10-year ones that you just did. You still got to pay attention to those.
Yeah.
While you're still chipping away at the low P Q I ones.
I can assure you, we're, we're doing that. We're.
But that's where our money should try to help you, right, is to maintain those so that you don't go in disrepair.
Right. That's where our money goes the farthest, but it doesn't make bad streets good, which is, which is a big problem right now.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, just to Councilmember Pfeiffer's point, I think you are doing that, and you show that in Slide 7, where the surface treatments, what you're doing is almost at your ideal. Where the other ones, you're, you know, 12 million behind, 5 million behind. The surface treatments one is the one that, because I think you're applying that strategy right now.
Exactly.
And as we get better streets, you, you'll still need more for that ideally, so I just wanted to.
No, that's spot on. And if you go back to seven, surface treatments go a long way for a low dollar amount, right? So.
Right.
And I think that's what that really illustrates, yeah, right there. So if we can help you get to that 20, 30% of surface treatments.
We just need more good streets to.
Yeah, you need more in there.
Put the surface treatments on.
Yeah, yeah. No, absolutely, because the resurfacing ones are the, the ones that get you.
Yeah.
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 I, I just wanted to bring up that, that that was the thing I was seeing in your presentation. And then the other question I have is how much of the arteri, like what is, this is an ignorant question. So are the arterial streets, are those all Arvada streets, or some of those C dot streets?
We're, we're just talking about ours, just Arvattas, yeah. We're not, we're not counting any.
I was going to say, like, oh yeah, C dot's doing a great job with their arterials, I mean, on point, but you're saying that's for Arvada's arterials. Okay.
Yeah. All right. One last thing I want to point out on this slide, and that's just that that number in parentheses there, the 67.23, that's what our network average would be if we hit all of these goals like spot on. If our arterials were 75, collectors at a 70, locals at a 65, that's where we would land, just based on the percentage of the network in each of those categories. So it's just within a few points of our stated goal. And I, I just want to point that out because I think it shows that we're, we're on the right track here.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. So I just have, um, I don't know, concept question. If, so the bad streets that are bad, they're all alligatored up. Most of those are the local ones, so they don't have snow removal, so we get the freeze thaw effect. Is that what's making them heave and, and keeping them alligatoring? The increasing alligatoring to, to the, each year? And then in the, in the spring, we have beautiful spring flowers growing out of the cracks? So it's almost an amenity.
Yeah. Yeah, that could be a factor.
Quickly, and perhaps this is a question for Mr. Archer as well. To the previous slide, you know, we noted in today's dollars, this is what this would be in terms of cost. However, are we potentially factoring in the anticipated rise in construction costs if and when tariffs are implemented?
Well, since the election only happened last week, we have not factored in anything that we're hypothetically proposing related to tariffs. But that being said, the team does a really good job of estimating costs out in the future using outside resources, including C dot and others, to try to come up with what costs are for the future. And we try to build that in the best we can.
Thank you.
This is just another way of looking at the same data. These bell curves show the same information. You have our P Q I on the vertical axis. The green number is our goal. And that line is where we'd like the, the peak of that bell curve to be. Where, where the horizontal lines go from blue to red is where we consider the street deficient. And then there at the bottom, you can see the percentage of the network in each of those functional classes. And then this is to show kind of where we rate compared to some of our neighboring cities. And we pulled this data from an annual report from the Colorado Asphalt Pavement Association. And I'll acknowledge that there's some variations. There's, uh, a lot of different ways that, that each city collects data and the numbers that they report. But even so, I think this is, uh, meaningful, kind of shows where we're at.
I'd like to ask another question. If you could go back to, thank you, Mayor, to Slide 23. Is the bottom of the bell curves on this slide in any particular area? Or would you say it's pretty evenly spread throughout the city?
Probably more even than you might imagine. Say, if anything, you know, the older neighborhoods are probably a higher percentage of the, like deficient locals. I think that'd be pretty fair to say, but, but it, I should have thrown a P Q I map on here. We've got a map where you could see like all the streets color-coordinated by their pavement quality. And there's a lot of red and black being in the poor and failed. And it's, it's pretty evenly distributed throughout the city, actually.
Yeah, I think I've seen that map before, but I haven't seen it in this presentation yet, so I wanted to ask about it. Okay.
And then I just wanted to look at our historic program funding real quick. On the left, you've got our annual funding since 2017, just in actual dollars. And then the graph on the right shows it adjusted for inflation in today's dollars. So you can see we, we're, we've got a little less like spending power than we have in, in years past. And on that note, I want to talk about funding options. The last time we came to council, we presented a number of different funding options, and we've since heard that council is in favor of a potential sales tax increase to fund the program. So on, on that note, I want to introduce Mike Skinner. He's a professional engineer with, and the director of pavement engineering at the Colorado Asphalt Pavement Association. And I asked him, uh, come and talk to you tonight, and he was generous enough to do so. So I'm going to pass this over to Mike.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. So my name is Mike Skinner. I'm the director of engineering for the Colorado Asphalt Pavement Association. I'm not here to sell anything, and as a trade association, we don't sell anything. I am a professional engineer. I've been in the asphalt business for 30 years as a design engineer. But my role at Kappa, I've been at Kappa for 10 years, and my role at Kappa is to support local agencies. There are 270 members of Kappa. 80 of those members are local agencies around the state, cities and counties. And so what I do is provide technical support and resources to the cities and counties around the state to help them manage and maintain the roadway network. It's a win-win-win for everybody. It's a win for industry because it's work. It's a win for the agencies because you get improvement in your roads. And it's a win for your residents because they're getting higher-quality roadways. Win-win-win. I'll be a little more blunt in the messaging that Ben shared with you. He was being gentle. The situation in Arvada is dire, and I'll show you why. He shared the information specifically in Arvada, but one of the things that I do at Kappa is I reach out to all the cities and counties across the state every year, and I ask them to share their information with us, and we put it together in an annual report. We put this on the Kappa website. There's over 100 local agencies in here this year that report their mileage and their condition. And then that's a tool that Ben can use and his counterparts at all the other agencies that he showed up there to compare, how is Arvada doing compared to a statewide average, and how are you doing to your neighbors? And I have bad news for you. Arvada is in the top five, let's call it the bottom five, worst-performing networks in the state. That's a lightbulb moment. That's a news flash right there. You may have not heard that message before. Arvada has one of the fifth-worst road networks in the state. In addition to that, uh, list, Arvada, you're at 44. So these numbers are on a scale of 0 to 100. Arvada's at a 44. Kenyon City, down there by the Royal Gorges, at a 37. City of Fountain, on the south side of Colorado Springs, is at a 31. Glenwood Springs is at 35. You're not in good company.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Yes.
Yeah, I was looking at this, and I really appreciate the stark reality you're presenting here. And one thing that I'm also noticing is that Arvada, by hundreds of miles, is also the most. the most amount of paved lane miles. So it seems like we have a lot more area to cover and pave than some of our surrounding neighbors. And so I, and then I wonder about, okay, population size, like, would it be a useful metric to know, you know, how many miles per person? Or, I don't know how you could figure it out, that, you know, if you're in Wheat Ridge, you have two hundred and eighty-three miles to pave, and Arvada has fifteen hundred, you know, but if we're the similar population size, or, you know, so I'm just trying to figure out another rubric of, like, what is proportional to our neighbors when we have, like, I don't, we have as much as Adams County to pave, according to this.
Yeah, those are, those are paved lane miles, not center lane miles, those are lane miles. So if you have a two-lane street in your residential neighborhood, one mile of that counts as two paved lane miles, you have one lane in each direction. Fifteen hundred miles, lane miles, in Arvada is a significant number, but it's not, you can see the, the numbers there for some of your agencies that are just alphabetical there, it's not without the, within the realm of outrageous size of a network. It's a very manageable-sized network. Let me share another metric with you.
Apologies, quickly, Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Thank you. Could we maybe use per capita in this? It might be, that might be a little more apples-to-apples. And, you know, to your point, Councilmember Ambrose, yeah, we have a lot of, of lane miles, and we built so quickly out, and where everybody else is all landlocked, that that's probably much to our detriment than our benefit, and now that we're adding on to canyon pines, that's just gonna add to our lane miles. So we, that's part of the thoughtful planning process that we might want to be thinking about as well, but maybe if we did it per capita, that, that might, the numbers might math out, but we have heard from, from people who live here and live elsewhere, they know exactly when they cross the city line, so that's not something that we necessarily should be advertising.
The per capita metric that you're talking about may be useful from a planning perspective, but what, what Ben and Britton are doing from the engineering and the public works perspective are irrelevant to maintaining the asset. Another comment that Ben shared with you, when he said your collector streets, forty percent of those are below the target PQI of forty, and sixty percent of your local roads are below your target value of thirty. Forty percent for your collectors, sixty percent for your locals. General rule of thumb, we call that backlog. Backlog is how much of your network needs to be reconstructed. General rule of thumb, if your agency has more than fifteen percent backlog, you are in a death spiral. You're in a black hole that you will not be able to get your program out of until you change your funding level. Your collector's at forty percent, your locals are at sixty percent. It puts that in perspective. That's why I say I might be a little more forthright in the messaging. Things are not good here in Arvada. I'm not trying to sell anything. I work with agencies across the state to share the truth, the reality, of what they have to deal with, and what your pavement management unit is trying to deal with in Arvada. What I'm trying to impose on you is, you may have not heard it posed to this, like this to you before, but things, your roadway in Arvada is really bad, and at its current funding level, it will not improve. There was discussion earlier about surface treatments. Surface treatments will not improve it with the conditions of the roads that you have now. You don't throw good money, meaning a surface treatment, on a road that is structurally failed. Putting a surface treatment or chip seal on a road that has moderate-to-high-severity alligator cracking is a waste of money. Don't throw good money on bad projects. So that's what I'm trying to share with you, is that your situation is quite dire here in Arvada. You have one of the fifth-worst networks in the state. Your average is forty, the statewide average is sixty-nine. It changes one point every year. It alternates between sixty-nine and seventy. That's not a target goal set by an agency, those are real numbers from every one of the cities and counties around the state, that is the average achievable number. The statewide average is sixty-nine this year, you're at forty-four. That's a very tough rock to lift, to get from forty-four to seventy, that you're targeting. How do you get there? So Ben made the comment about what an ideal program would look like for Arvada. I would change the terminology on that and drop the term "ideal" and turn it to "sustainable." What does a sustainable program look like for Arvada? Meaning, sustainable, not in, not in terms of, uh, green, sustainable, I mean, sustainable funding, to maintain your network. How do you get to that point? You've got a lot of backlog here in Arvada, and the way you're going to have to do that is you're going to have to have an infusion of capital dollars. Lots of agencies are doing this successfully across the state. Last week, there were seven agencies that were on the ballot to do exactly what we're talking about right now. Five of the seven passed. The five of, the seven that were on the ballot, Arapahoe County passed at seventy-one percent. They were looking at, they had an additional seventy-four million dollars, they were in Tabor funds, but they were dedicating that to housing program and roads program in Arapahoe County. City of Colorado Springs, their continuation of their existing sales tax passed at seventy-three percent. That's allowing them to spend about an additional fifty million dollars a year, now Colorado Springs is a massive network, but specifically for their roadway program. Jefferson County had a sales tax initiative that, not, excuse me, a sales tax initiative, a Tabor initiative that passed fifty-seven percent, with a portion of those funds being dedicated to their road and bridge program. City of Greeley had a continuation of a sales tax that they have that passed at sixty-four percent. Then the two that did not pass, this, the, two of the, two of the seven that we were tracking, is Laramo County, that's Fort Collins, they failed fifty-one to forty-nine. It was close. Mesa, uh, Laramo County did not have an outreach program. They put it on the ballot and left it out there on the vine to die without any public support. It was very close, but it didn't pass. Mesa County, which is Grand Junction, also did the same thing, failed with the Streets Initiative, but it failed a little stronger, it failed at fifty-seven percent in Mesa County, but they, just like Laramo County, again, they had no outreach program. They put it on the ballot and they left it out there. So the two programs that had no support didn't pass. The five programs that did have support passed. So this increase in funding that you have to take under consideration in Arvada to elevate that forty where you are today, to make headwind and try to get to that seventy, boy, that is a long and tough road. That's not gonna happen in five years, that's not gonna happen in fifteen years. That's a twenty-year road we're talking about here. This is a long way to go. You have to start somewhere. And what we're showing with is, Kappa, we work with these agencies across the state every year and track these things. Now, we can't work with the agency directly, right? Once something goes onto the ballot, the agency steps away from it. But we get involved as the trade association and work with the citizens group, or the Chamber of Commerce, or the Department of Economic Development that is promoting the issue, to help share resources and share, share the message. So I think with that, that's the end of my, those are the end of my slides, but I wanted to share two things with you. Number one, Arvada's hanging on by your fingernails with one hand. You're the bottom-five agency in the state. Don't be scared of that. Embrace that. Canyon City, embrace that. Canyon City was at a thirty-five. They were worse off than you are today. They embraced that. They said, listen, voters, residents, we know how bad our streets are, you know how bad our streets are. They embraced it, and they voted it and they passed it. Kent, or Colorado Springs did the exact same thing. When Mayor John Sothers was running his platform, he was gonna die on the sword for their street improvement program. And he did, and it passed, and it's passed for a third time now as an extension. So there is a path forward, there is a light forward, but when I, the first discussion when I have and go to talk to Ben or his counterpart in any other agency around the state is, you can't start to fill the hole, fix the problem, before you know, number one, where the hole is, and number two, how deep the hole is. So you need an accurate assessment of your condition, you have that, you're at forty, you know how bad it is, and you know, you know where it is, you know what kind of funding mechanism is going to be required, an additional twenty million dollars a year to solve the problem. How do you get there? That's a difficult choice, and as council, you know, that's, that's discussion. But as a resource, as the Asphalt Pavement Association, we don't have a dog in the fight, other than we promote the use of asphalt over concrete, but that's where my bias stops. I don't have anything to sell to the city of Arvada. I'm simply here to help you and help Ben and Britton and his staff with technical support, engineering analysis, et cetera. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions or comments, but I just wanted to put it in a different voice than what you've always heard internally from your staff.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you being here. Is any member of council have a question or a comment at this time? Councilmember Marriott.
I have a couple of questions, I'm not sure if you're the right one to answer, or Ben is, or whoever, but one of the questions I have is, is there any technology that's either imminent or on the horizon that improves our situation? And I think about, you know, asphalt comes in many different flavors these days, it's not all just one. Are there other, other technological things that are, that are coming that make things any better?
No. Short answer, no. You may hear from some, some agencies around the state that they're trying to incorporate a sustainability program into their public works division. Fort Collins is doing that, and they're running full speed into that.
What, what does that mean?
Well, they're, they're trying, how do, how do they decrease their global warming potential?
Oh, I didn't mean that.
That's, that's, that's about all that's out there as far as new technology.
Okay, but I didn't mean that at all, I mean, is there any technology about the formulation of asphalt, the methods that it's, that it's laid down, is there?
A little bit, there's refinements, but not enough to.
Machinery, efficiency.
Not enough to move the needle that we're talking about. Our product, our industry, is really quite simple. It's rock, sand, and black gooey stuff. We mix it together, we make it hot, we want it through a paper machine, and we compact it. That's, we can refine that a little bit, but there aren't any movers and shakers, I think, that you're asking about.
Okay. The other, other question that I have is, does asphalt, as far as I know, roughly follows the price of oil, am I correct?
No. That's, so, as the trade association, we are not allowed to track prices per the State Attorney General. You know, there can't be any kind of perception of price-cost fixing or something like that. But I can tell you this, we get this question all the time, what's the price of a ton of asphalt? That's how we measure our industry, by a ton, we sell it by a ton. There's three components that go into the price of a ton of asphalt. The price of the rock, price of the binder, that's the black gooey stuff, and the price of doing business. So if we look at all three of those prices individually, the price of rock increases double-digit prices annually, at least ten percent increases. Why does that happen? In Colorado, we have a plethora of highly durable, strong rock. Getting it out of the ground is very difficult. Not because it's hard to make, get it out of the ground, but getting new gravel pits permitted through a county, Jefferson County, I couldn't tell you the last time they permitted a new gravel source. So that is driving the cost of aggregates. So one of, out of those three, the price of aggregate is going up double digits every year. The price of the binder that you're talking about, the refined product, there's some variation, some hills and valleys, but not major swings or, or the, that's, so I'll call that neutral. The price of doing business is going up, we're all seeing that. The cost of your home, insurance program for your house, your home, cost of gasoline, cost of groceries, cost of doing business for all of these kinds. So two of those three are in the positive direction, the one is in the neutral, so I think somebody commented earlier about cost of construction and escalating construction costs, there's no slowing down to it. It's, it's, it's a reality, so the more work you can do in today's dollars is a benefit to the city of Arvada.
Okay. I want to pose a, another question, something that obviously comes to mind, and that is, you know, one of the things that was on the slides, and it, it makes sense, is, is that we, we were striving for better ADA compliance, and so every time we're gonna mill and overlay a street or whatever, we're gonna go in first, and we're gonna replace the broken concrete and fix the concrete problems, but we're also gonna go replace perfectly good corners with different corners for this amorphous goal of ADA compliance. Given the situation that Arvada's in with its streets, would it not, as a strategic exercise or strategic thought, be to, let's stop replacing corners that are perfectly fine, that just don't comply with whatever the latest regulation that got written was, for now, and that the next time we get through there, maybe we do them the next time, but to shift some of that money from all that concrete into less of that and more of the, more of the other stuff? That's probably not a question for you to answer, that's probably more.
I can, I can talk to that a little bit.
More, more for the team, uh, hang on one second, more for the team to answer, but to me, it just seems that, you know, we have, part of the things that makes things expensive, you mentioned it with, you know, cost of doing business, regulations, overhead, those types of things, and that's certainly a regulation that's really, really costly. When you have X amount of dollars to spend, if you're gonna strictly comply with that regulation, it means you're gonna just do less of it, 'cause each unit costs more.
In the last five years, there have been two agencies in the state of Colorado that have been targeted by the Department of Justice for an ADA compliance audit. City and County of Denver and the City of Fort Morgan, out there on the I-76 corridor. They are dealing with massive repercussions from that audit. They're doing exactly what you described. How do we get as much money into the street? If our, if our curb ramps are good enough, let's leave them, and they got hammered by the Department of Justice. So it's a, it's a risk, it's a risk that city has to weigh, is are they willing to take that? Those two agencies in the last five years are getting hammered by the DOJ.
Well, let me, let me just further comment on that. You know, at the rate we're achieving this ADA compliance, we're decades out.
Yes.
Many, multiple decades out.
Yes.
Not a decade, but multiple decades, may, maybe many decades out, and may never happen. And you, you know why it may never happen? Because the rules change, the goalposts move, every, every, every now and then they move, and what was compliant two years ago is no longer compliant, or what was compliant ten years ago now isn't compliant. What we're putting down now may very well not be compliant in ten years. And, you know, that, I, I get what, I get what you're saying, I, you know, I don't, I don't know that, you know, openly defying federal, federal rules is the right answer here, but, but I also think that, you know, federal, you know, and maybe we have a hope after last Tuesday of some of this stuff being rolled back or softened, but, but, you know, these unfunded mandates, whether they come from the feds or come from the state, have a giant impact on people who live here, and it seems to me that, that it, that has at least be part of the discussion, that just roll, rolling over and giving up on, because some, you know, federal agency or federal bureaucrats said, here's what you've gotta do, doesn't seem to me to be the answer. It seems to me that that's gotta be in the conversation too, just to make it efficient. So, there was that. Let me, let me, let me make just one, one comment, and this is a comment, not a question, comment. You know, I, 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 I see the, the desire to, you know, pass, pass additional taxes to support additional spending in roadways, and I, I, I support additional spending on our road network. You know, I think we can argue about how it gets spent, whether it's on concrete or asphalt or whatever, but I, I, I think we have been, and there's a perfect slide in there that's made the point that I've been trying to make here for years, which is, is that we, we select a funding level, and then we don't even index it for inflation, we just let, keep spending that amount, and then effectively the amount goes down. And I, I think that's an irresponsible thing to do. I think, you know, our road network is probably our largest asset, and it's, it's, it's also gotta be one of our core responsibilities, and having it be the last thing we do with whatever money we have left, I find completely inappropriate. I also, at this point, don't think that the only way you fix this is you, is you, is you go try to convince. I also, at this point, don't think that the only way you fix this is you, is you, is you go try to convince the voters to give you more money, because I think the chances of that passing are slim. I think they're, I think they're very slim. And I can, I can identify several things where we could put significantly more dollars in, into, into our road maintenance, which I think we should do, I think we should be doing. You know, in the eleven years I've been here, the FTE count in the city has gone up by forty. That's five million dollars. I mean, we basically do the same thing we did twelve years ago, or eleven years ago. We basically have the same size of a community that we had, I mean, we've grown, we've grown slightly. But our FTE count has grown dramatically, well, that's a choice. So we're making a choice for one thing over another. You know, we, we have three million dollars or so coming from the expiration of an urban renewal area in the coming couple of years. City council will have the opportunity to direct that towards road maintenance spending if they so choose. Now, they can also direct it to all kinds of other things too, or, or not direct it at all and let it just get consumed and split amongst the organization. You know, currently, the big topic around here is how much homeless or human services spending are we gonna get to do? You know, what are, what features are we gonna put in place that, you know, maybe we're responsible for, maybe we're not, maybe we're responsible for all of it, that might be multiple million dollars a year, I mean, we could. It's just a choice to not put that towards our road maintenance, our road program. I brought one up just here, just here recently, where we purchased a new building for an NGO that's here in, in town, and we're, you know, letting them, we're renting it to them for a dollar a year, or a hundred dollars a year, or something, something that's next to nothing, and we're doing all the, all the maintenance and all the upkeep and all the everything on it, that in total will add up to some money, I mean, I don't know, is it a million dollars a year, maybe it's not, maybe it's only half a million dollars a year, but you start having enough of those, and you start talking about significant money. I don't think it's out of the reach of Arvada at all to deal with this issue, and I think we should deal with this issue. But it requires that this council make something that's clearly one of our core priorities, a core priority, which means you can't have everything, you've gotta have, you know, you've, you've gotta, you've gotta say this comes first, and when, when the money gets down to the bottom and runs out, then the things below that don't get funded. We just saw that with some grant program. As opposed to what we're doing now, which is, we seem to fund everything above it, and then whatever's left over goes here, and it only ends up being the same as we spent last year, which is why we're in the problem we're in, so, anyway, that's just a comment.
Thank you. Before I turn to the other council members, there are some lights on, I'd like to give you any, a chance to respond, or any thoughts you may have?
A couple of thoughts.
Please.
In 2008, when the mortgage crisis hit, and, and all local agencies were scrambling to maintain their programs, Jefferson County came up with a prioritization program that was unique, and they were the only ones that did it. They put a survey out to their staff and the residents, and they said, out of the forty-seven programs that we administer in Jefferson County, please rank them in importance, one to forty-seven, put them in order, and we're going to compile this survey. And then, when we have to do budget cuts, we're gonna take the top eight, and they're not taking a budget cut. They're deemed the most critical services that Jeffco does. And then, number nine through number twenty, they're only gonna take a ten percent budget cut, and if you're in the bottom third, look out, because you gotta make up for everybody else. But they were the only ones that did that. The top three programs in Jefferson County in 2008, number one, deemed snow removal. Number two, street maintenance. Number three, street widening and capacity improvements. Top three priorities for the staff and the residents of Jefferson County were all street-related. So to your point, is that's a core element of, of, as, of what you're overseeing in the city of Arvada, is your roadway network. Now, over the last dozen years, the agencies that we've helped work with this, I can share with you a couple of best practices. Number one, if you do go this route, you need to have a sunset on it. We've only seen one pass without a sunset, and that was in Fort Morgan. Sunset can be three years, five years, seven years, maybe ten. Sunset. Number two, is gotta have some accountability to that program, meaning here's our project list, here's what our five-year, ten-year program looks like. If you don't have a sunset, you don't have a program list, the chances of, of something like that passing are very slim. Now, to your point about, you think it's, it's possible to address it, if that's possible to reallocate funds internally, that's a wonderful, that's wonderful to do that. The city of Glenwood Springs tried to do that two years ago. Matt Langhorst, who's their public works director, there was a lot of pushback within the city of Glenwood Springs. And they said, no, we think the city is misspending our money, and it failed miserably, it was like eighty, twenty voted against it. And the city of Glenwood Springs are at thirty-five, they're worse than you are in Arvada. And they're really, really struggling with that in Glenwood Springs. So that's the only agency that I've known in the last ten years that is trying to address this problem without having that influx of money. So if you can find money, kudos. Dig hard, try to find it. But let me just put that in perspective. For Ben and his staff and your engineering department to address those issues that came up earlier, give some love to the streets that haven't been touched in twenty-plus years, that's not a five-year funding program. That's a forever funding program. How do you elevate your funding program from eight million dollars to twenty million dollars plus to keep up with inflation? The only way you're gonna find that kind of money is, most agencies, the way they find that money, is with this type of issue. If you can do it without, even better, that's great. How you find the money, that's a question each, each agency has to answer for themselves. But I'm just the messenger here to tell you, you guys need to find some money because the problem is there, so that's my response.
Thank you, I greatly appreciate that. Councilmember Davis?
Oh, thank you, and thank you for this eye-opening report. I think that it's things that we needed to hear. And in terms of ADA compliance, I think we have to recognize that Arvada is the second fastest aging community. So egress and walking and having these ADA features in the older neighborhoods like mine, I live in a neighborhood where all the homes were built in the fifties. So, and not only do I see folks who are old like me using the egress so that I don't stumble and fall when I'm running, but I see young families using them with their strollers as well. So I think that these features that the city is putting, are putting in, thank you very much for these. I think it's, it's necessary and very helpful. And it also helps with stormwater, stormwater control. So we don't have as much flooding and puddling in my neighborhood as we had had before without these improvements. So thank you to Jacqueline and her team, it's, it's exciting. I'm not sure where Mr. Marriott's living, but in the past ten years, we have increased the number of people who live here and lane miles that we have added to this city. I mean, it's been amazing, the amount of paving. If you talk to people and about just the number of streets that we're putting in, side streets, all that kind of thing, lane miles, we have grown quite a bit, and we've grown in population. So I think that it's, it's evident, self-evident, what's going on in Arvada right now. You gave us a lot of information about rock, sticky stuff, and the cost of doing business, and it's going up, it's not decreasing. So the cost of living for everybody is increasing, homes and whatnot. Insurance, I'm sure that insuring an asphalt plant is amazingly higher than it wa, than it was ten years ago. We have done a wonderful job in Arvada right now, providing the basic services of water, wastewater, and stormwater. So we don't have as much flooding as we had it before, we have a beautiful Ralston Central Park that holds stormwater, that is amazing. Before those neighborhoods, people's yards were flooding before we made these improvements to Ralston Central Park. So infrastructure improvements and maintenance has really been outstanding here in Arvada. We are sustaining our basic services, but we've heard time after time, we are keeping the lights on. And so I just asked Mr. Archer about funding for streets and the variability, and a lot of things go into it. It just seems to me, I've lived here for over twenty years, I've been in Colorado since eighty-one, and it just seems like we in Arvada have, have not, we've not given ourselves a raise. So it, it, a, a small incremental sunsetting tax increase, I don't think is, is going to be burdensome. I think that we have a good chance of, of, of getting that tax increase if and when we go to the vote of the people. But also, I worked for a very large municipality with billion-dollar, billions of dollars in budget. And we, we were staffed very well, and Arvada is staffed very well, but they are just keeping the lights on, we see that in our, our law enforcement arm, we see that in snow removal, public works, we are, and parks especially, which is one of our crown jewels here in Arvada, comes up in every survey. And we are doing our best, and yes, we did increase our, our, our staff, but we also cre, increased acres of parkland, correct? We increased, you know, just, like I said, our water, stormwater, wastewater systems. You need people to maintain those. And it, we've been doing so much improvements in our technology, which is fantastic, and we're keeping up in cybersecurity. So I am just, I feel like the public appreciates what we're doing here. And after hearing from staff and from you as, as a professional engineer, I think that the, the crystal ball is getting a little clearer on what we're doing here in Arvada. It's, it's important that we get to our streets. That is one of the number-one complaints I hear, like I said, from people who live here or come from elsewhere and come into Arvada. You always know when you cross into Arvada. So thank you for, you know what, peeling back the layers of the onions, and thank to you too, Ben, it's very important. And I appreciate all that the staff are doing to, to keep this city running. And we may just, we've pinched and pinched, and now we may just have to ask for a little more. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Ambrose, you were next.
Yes, I have some questions. Can the city of Arvada opt out of ADA standards to save money?
No, it's a, it would be, it would come with consequences. Consequences that would be extremely detrimental to us as an organization and to our citizens.
So it'd end up costing us more probably than what we tried to save by cutting corners?
It might, I mean, we would have to do that calculus, but it's not a good idea. And I'm sure there would be, those consequences would come with penalties, particularly if the federal government could clip portions of our public meetings and show that it was a willful and wanton violation of federal law.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I kind of think it's highly discriminatory for people who are elderly, who are using walkers, for families who are using strollers. I think, you know, having ADA access increases walkability, especially in a town like Arvada, where we are very proud that over ninety percent of our population is within walking distance to a park, so it seems like the easier we make it for people to walk. But I just wanted to make, be clear, as, those are my moral assumptions, I just wanted to know, like legally, where that was. When is the last time that we passed a sales tax increase that was not related for, to the police?
Never?
Never ever?
Never ever.
Okay, so we might be a little behind in sales tax increases?
I'm being a little facetious, but we have not passed a sales tax increase since Tabor came into play. So that's nineteen ninety-four, before that, councils were allowed to adjust taxes up and down, so you have to go past previous to nineteen ninety-four.
So thirty years since we've, and when's the last time we passed a sales tax increase for the police?
Um, in two thousand and five.
So nineteen years ago. Okay, so we have not had a sales tax increase for nineteen years. And when was the last time that we raised our mills?
That also goes prior to Tabor, so you'd have to go prior to nineteen ninety-four.
So also thirty years, and what's the average Arvadaan with a house that's worth six hundred and fifty thousand dollars? That's the median house price in Arvada, pay in mills and property taxes?
They pay four point three one mills to Arvada. Depending on where they live, the average home pays somewhere around ninety mills. If they live in a metro district, that can go as high as a hundred and sixty-five mills. Using your example, we would receive about a hundred and seventy-five dollars from each home to Arvada in property tax.
So for thirty years, the average person has paid in today's dollars a hundred and seventy-five dollars to the city every year in mills?
In property tax, that's correct.
In property taxes, okay. You know, I think our sales tax is one of the lower sales taxes in our surrounding communities, even as we have three to four times the amount of paved road. So I think this imbalance, in my opinion, of not raising our taxes in twenty, thirty years. And I also feel a little confused about the monies that could be saved that were referenced, because, for example, the FTEs, not every FTE that is added, it comes from Arvada taxpayer dollars from sales tax or property tax, and also I think the social programs, like a lot of time we're acting as a pass-through from county, state, federal, so it's not very clear to me if this is, you know, the other things would actually are places for us to cut it. And actually, I did ask staff this on places where we could trim the fat, and I got the answer that we actually reduced services quite a bit during the pandemic, and we haven't gone back up to pre-pandemic levels of services, is that correct?
That is correct, in some areas, we reduced their budgets and did not add back the amount that we had reduced. I could not make the statement to know if in today's dollars are we above where we were before, but certainly many areas received a cut in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, and we didn't just add back.
Okay, so we have not passed a sales tax increase for twenty years, we have not raised mills in thirty years, and we have already trimmed the fat during the pandemic and have cut back our budget substantially. Well, I, I don't want you to define substantially, we have cut back our budget, right? Okay, I just wanted to make that clear about spending, and I think, you know, I'm gonna trust our budget book that shows line by line everything that we've spent, every dollar where it's going, and every dollar where it comes from, and I think we should really be looking very clearly at what is Arvada tax-based when we're thinking, okay, what else could we cut? You know, if we really want roads and we start cutting parks, you know, maybe we don't want everybody to be able to walk within ten minutes of a park, maybe that's two, you know, when we have roads at forty percent. Like, if we really wanna look at cuts versus going to taxpayers to ask for mills or sales tax or other fees, I mean, these are the kinds of decisions we'd have to be making, because it seems like to me we've already cut pretty far back and haven't even gone back to pre-pandemic levels.
Thank you, Councilmember Ambrose, Councilmember Pfeiffer?
So Ben, I have a question for you. So at one point, I remember, I think Westminster was playing with this, the rubberized asphalt. Whatever happened to that? I mean, recycled tires? Yeah, recycled tires, we're using that to make it quieter, one, and supposedly it lasted longer, but, you know, because wear and tear, it's just rubber.
I'm not really familiar with the rubberized asphalt, we are doing some cool stuff with mixed design, we've been using a lot more SMA. We've been using a polymer modified binder on our collectors, which, which we really like. We pay a little bit more for that, but it's kind of middle of the road between regular hot mix and stone matrix asphalt. And then we're looking at, like, a more balanced mixed design for locals next year. We're actually working with our contractor and an engineer to kind of play with the, the components, maybe increase the oil content, and maybe try a liquid anti-strip, and we're, we're doing what we can there. I don't know if Mike might know, actually know more about the rubberized-
In twenty-ten, that was a CDOT initiative to use rubberized asphalt, it came out of Arizona, and they only used it for about four years. Very quickly realized it doesn't, it doesn't work in our highly oxidized environment here in Colorado, so we haven't seen that since probably two thousand and twelve.
Okay. So you are leaning forward on some ideas of how to prolong assets, so I appreciate that, Ben. What about, there's a lot of discussion here around, you know, looking for more aggregate, but I'm pretty sure you guys are recycling the aggregate that you get when you're milling and overlaying. So you're not looking for new rock, right? I mean, you reuse it.
It is recycled, but we have a, I think it's twenty percent-
It's only twenty percent of the recycled asphalt.
On wrap recycled asphalt. It is recycled, but we have a, I think it's 20% limit on, on rap recycled asphalt.
I, I'm sorry you both were talking. Go ahead, Ben.
Uh, yeah, we, we have a 20% limit on recycled asphalt, like in our hot mix. So we do use that, like it's always recycled. Every, every street we mill, the asphalt's one of the most recycled materials in the world, I believe. But we do limit the amount of recycled aggregate, like in our new asphalt. When that, actually, we talked about that at a forum just the other day about potentially increasing that, that limit because it's, it's a better material than it used to be. There's better quality control on the recycling and filtering and, and all that.
With the recycling increasing the 20%?
Of the asphalt mix, I guess there, it used to get a lot of, there were some quality control issues, like you'd get trash and stuff like in your asphalt mix, like with the recycled material. But they've improved the, the processes have improved quite a bit. So I don't think that's as big of an issue. And we, I think there is potential for increasing.
But that's an industrial, uh, industry kind of thing for them to increase. We can't tell them to increase it.
No, we could, we could tell them to increase the amount of recycled asphalt in our specified mix that we use on our projects.
Which, maybe that's something you could try as well.
Yeah.
That's all I have with questions. I will make some comments about, you know, when I first got on council, the city was 105,000 people. It's now over 124,000. That's over 19, well, about 19% increase. But yet we only increased our employees 5% to support that. We also just, just in, out west, to kind of give you guys an idea, Candelaus and Line Rock added 2,500 homes, well over eight parks, I don't know how many miles of trails. If each house has about two cars, which they do, that inserted another 30,000 to 40,000 cars into, because there's no transit out there. I think you guys all know how I feel about that. That, that's 40,000 cars. And I can tell you, some people have three, actually, like me. Not John. I don't know how many John has, but four or five maybe. But think about Wadsworth alone, is 70,000 cars a week go down Wadsworth. Just Wadsworth, and that's pass-through traffic. So when you look at the multiplier of the wear and tear of the asset, we have not sustained the ability, we have not gone with the increases that everyone else has. You've seen in the CPI index, 10, 11% increase. We didn't do that. Yet the demand on our systems have increased into almost double digits everywhere. But yet we've only increased a single digit. So, you know, I just gave a spit of what it looks like, but people need to realize 2,500 homes in just two communities out there, it's a lot of impact to the system. It's also, when I got on council, there was nothing past Indiana, other than Westwoods and maybe a little further out to the, to Long Lake. It seemed far away and it felt like I went through the country to get to Long Lake. So the growth out west, which is our last of our urban growth boundary, is full in the last 12 years. It's getting full. So we can't stay with the mils that you brought up, Councilmember Ambrose, of roughly $175 of today's dollars. We rely heavily on other sources of income and Dr. Cog and sales tax. And we just, we're not going to, we're not going to be able to maintain it. So this is a great conversation. I, I, I don't disagree that we should keep putting more of our own money into this. We're going to have to find it, and I think we need to continue. When I got on, we were only putting 3,000, $3 million into maintenance when I got on in 2011. I'm glad we're at least floating in maybe soon teens, right? We try to get up there. But that, I mean, that's three, four times more than when I first started here 13 years ago. So we're trying, but the buying power dropped, you know, and that's what got us. You know, I think what, what, what I'd be interested in is further conversations around, where can we get more of a fixed dollar amount from the city's general funds? We need, we, we, I don't want it to fluctuate. I want it to be a fixed amount. Because if we go for, say, a sales tax increase that has a sunset, because that's probably the only thing I would probably support, it has to have a sunset. Those are successful. But we have to have skin in the game as a city, that we've done everything we can to, to lock and load at a dollar amount. And as much as we can, we'll increase when we can and then sustain it. So that it's not, it's a shared effort. It's not only the city's general fund needs to contribute into it, but also the community can help close that gap so that we can maintain it. You know, the sidewalks alone are a big deal for myself. I think that they're important. They add a quality of life when they're there. And we have still about, what, $80 million of the sidewalks we'd need to probably attend to. And, you know, we need to, we need to keep focusing on it. I know that plans, that's a big conversation about road diets and growth and move of sidewalks. I don't want to get into that chaos right now. But just maintenance, just maintaining what we have is a lot of money. So I think we need to just further the conversation of what that trajectory looks like. I, I think it's something we can do over the next year or year and a half. And, and maybe lean into this topic some more over, over the next year or so. But it was a good presentation. Thanks for coming out here and presenting.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right. So that closes our workshops for this evening. I will turn it over quickly to Ms. Haley, staff updates.
Sorry. Thank you. Nothing from me tonight.
Ms. Morris?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
All right. Then to close this evening, I would like to go ahead and ask council if we have any departing thoughts for Councilmember Faray. I will go ahead and kick it off. I know, we are not going to roast you. Oh, Lisa, it has been such a joy to work with you. You have such boundless energy and drive. And you know how to stretch and how to push for things and government moves so slowly. The, the wheels are hard to turn, but you were always standing at the crank, trying to get results and to get results for the people of this city. I can't tell you how much I appreciate that and how I know you are going to be a tremendous partner for us at the state. So thank you for everything you've done. It is not goodbye. It is simply, I'll see you in a different capacity in about two months' time.
All right. Ms. Davis?
Aloha, Lisa. You're the reason I'm sitting here. I was on the Charter Review Committee with Lisa and I met up with her. And I've always wanted to do this, but I worked for the city and county of the big D. And I, she, she said there's an open seat. Bob Pfeiffer's going, but he came back. And yet he's still here. And so I took the leap of faith and I did it, and I'm glad I did. I was just sharing with Ms. Haley that I always feel like I'm still in the mix, like I'm still boots on the ground. So I see a lot of this stuff from the staff point of view. And it's been so delightful to bounce some of those ideas off of you and to just watch you grow as a council member and also becoming a mother and moving forward in your career. I wish for you all of the best. And it's not goodbye because we are still going to get together and hash out the problems and save the world. So until we meet again, aloha.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Lisa, you and I were newbies three years ago. So I, I think, you know, we were, we were kind of the freshmen coming in together. And I really appreciate being a partner with you on that. I think it would have been really hard if one of us were alone, being a newbie. And so it's, it's nice to kind of try things out and figure out how to maneuver things and, and work with our fellow counterparts on council. And so I really appreciate the, the ability to, to see you as a thinking partner on, on different issues, from recycling to housing to, to many other things that you and I have worked on together. And so just, just thank you a lot for, for that. And we definitely are going to miss you, but consider you not only a friend, but a partner and, and hope that continues in, in your new adventures at the state legislature. So best of luck.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Yeah, Lisa, I just wanted to say thank you. You know, you are the role model for me as a woman veteran. Thank, thank you for your service. And also when I was like, I can't run for office, I'm getting married at the same time. You're like, I did it. You know, so going through the name change together, kind of, not together, but you know, through the same kind of situation and having a family, but still being very dedicated to service. And, you know, I really appreciate how you always tried to move council along to get the resolutions passed and motions passed as soon as possible. But you're really wonderful leadership and great colleague and a model to a lot of other people who thought that they couldn't run for office. And not only, you know, did you do it for city council, but now you're going on to the state and showing so many other people how you can do this with a one-year-old, you know, and just have a much more diverse range of people at the legislature. You know, your background as a social worker is a very unique background in being, you know, this is how social, you, social issues actually get resolved. This is how government gets it wrong and is just a very much needed voice. And we'll miss you, but I appreciate where you're going as well.
Councilmember Pfeiffer, you are the final light.
Okay. So Lisa, if you remember, you applied for, I think it was Human Services about five years ago, I think it might have been, maybe six? And you came in and we, as David Jones and I interviewed you in that little room, which is, you know, the shared now. But you came in and, and you know, we only, it's, we all call it speed dating. If, if anyone's been through our thing, it's fairly quick. I mean, we only spent, what, 10 minutes maybe? As soon as you left, I told David Jones, she would be great for city council. And I even said, she'll be back and I'll put my bet on that. And David, if he's listening, he would know, him and I talked about this. And I said, she might not get picked for Human Services, but she'll come back on council. And she did.
She wouldn't listen.
Yeah. I was like, there's bigger things for you to be involved with than, I mean, not that Human Services Committee is not, but I knew you, you were going to go somewhere bigger and, and greater and do a bigger impact. So, you know, it's interesting how you can almost predict that a little bit, that you were going to be here to one day. But you know what? I'll just wrap it up. And I agree with everyone, with, with everyone's saying. But the biggest thing for me that I appreciate about you, and this is where I think you and I are alike, maybe, maybe I have more years on you than you, than, than, than yourself. But you always want to say, why can't we? Like, you always want to get to yes and always challenge the norm and kind of say, you know, we, we can do this. Why can't we do this? I appreciate that. I challenge my employees every day, that same thought processes. I don't, I want to, I, I don't want to hear you can't. I want to hear, how can you get there? You know, and, and that's, I also call that getting to yes. And, and you're going to do great there. It's going to be challenging at the Capitol. You're going to be a sea of other elected officials, but keep that mindset and keep that focus. And you're going to do great things for our community. So I appreciate you. I wish we were on council longer, but we'll just yell at you when you make stupid laws and. Yeah, yeah. No, but you'll be missed and we appreciate everything. And one last thing, seeing you bloom into being a mother and everything else has been great. And I think your life has been a roller coaster even the last three years, from getting on council to where you are today. And hopefully you take it all in and appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Marriott, buzz dislike.
So Lisa, congratulations on your new, new position. And following up on what Mr. Pfeiffer said, once you get interacting with your new colleagues down there, please don't forget about local control. And please, no unfunded mandates.
Here, here. I think we'll all second that one. Okay. Lisa, would you like to give any words?
You know, I don't like emotions, so I don't want to say too much. I appreciate the journey that you all have been on with me. This is a team effort and we disagree a lot. And it's really hard to do this job, but I appreciate you all as colleagues and guiding me and calling me out when I'm wrong and agreeing with, when I'm right. I really just appreciate the journey. Having a baby on council is really hard, you know, physically, mentally, emotionally. And you all really were supportive of me. And yes, I was impatient with policy moving forward. And I appreciate that you all slow me down to really critically think about some of the issues in different ways and in different lenses. And I think that's so important. So while I wanted to move things fast and forward, I appreciate all of your perspectives on that. In the city team, Linda, the courage it took for you to step up and, and be a leader is, words can't express that. And I'm very, very grateful for that. And I'm just very grateful to see your leadership. And it's a quiet leadership that people don't look at and, and value in, in the way that I've really grown to appreciate. So thank you for that. And Rachel, I didn't know how much lawyers needed to be a part of these decision-making processes. You, you all hold a lot of power and, and we trust you. So thank you for always being there, always answering the questions, whether we thought they were dumb or not. And Kristin, the way that you navigate behind the scenes and keep herding cats, it, it's, I don't know if the city would be functioning without you. So I, I'm very, very grateful for the city staff and the city team. And I know it's been challenging. I know that we're challenging and we need to work through that. I, I know it wasn't easy, many of, many of these sessions. But we all are running because we collectively love the city. And I think we need to keep going to that place when we get pissed at each other. And I just really hope we can work through some of these challenges. You know, we love the city. We're a part of the city. So even if we disagree, let's get to yes together and respectfully. And I just hope to leave you at that.
Thank you at that. All right. With that, we stand adjourned.